I'll be here. Thank you for having me as your guest this evening, as your moderator, and thanks to Mr. Ford and Eastham for getting this all together, as well as all the students who are sending out all the emails and getting this thing put together. This forum is part of our voter education efforts to help voters and students make an educated decision on the upcoming elections specifically for District 7. We hope that over the course of this next hour in the debate, you will learn more about these candidates and what their future offers and what their hopes are for District 7. First up, a little housekeeping, I guess if you will. We'd like to welcome all of you today. Mr. Garcia, Ms. Schaefer, and Mr. Kelman, thank you all for being here this evening. Saw lots of candidate signs on my way into the school tonight, so thank you all for being here tonight. Let's see, first up, you'll have three minutes for your opening statements and one-minute rebuttal, if there is so, and when you see a yellow card over here, that means that you have 30 seconds. When you see the red card, that means time is up. And if you continue on, we'll very politely say thank you very much and move on to the next candidate and the next question. We have several questions here from students who have put all this together that we would like to ask of you, and we'll start with Mr. Garcia.
Good.
If you wouldn't mind, the first question is, what is your vision for education in our community?
Well, thank you so much for having us, Ms. Chatton, and thank you for moderating the debate, and I would like to thank Principal Eller, Mr. Granger, and the parents and students of East Hamilton High School for having us here. It's a pleasure to be here and an honor, so thank you. My vision for the school system is to produce well-equipped, productive members of our community. I think that's the primary role of education, to understand the workforce requirements in this community and to make sure that our students are prepared to step into those roles as seamlessly as possible. Whether they choose to go on to college, or whether they choose to pursue a career in the trades, or even join the military, we need to best equip them to be able to pursue those dreams to the best of our ability.
Okay, thank you very much. Same question. Who would like to go next? Ms. Schaefer, how about you? Same question.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Oh, of course. That question is, what is your vision for education in this community?
So, my vision for education in this community, it starts with a safer approach. Supporting our students, teachers, and administrators. Addressing our funding challenges. Fighting for our conservative values. Enhancing our facilities. And responding to parental input. That is the framework that the school board builds through sound policy and efficient budgeting practices. And the foundation of every community is education. Our students are our leaders for tomorrow, and we owe a duty of stewardship to those students and to their teachers who teach and train them every day. That framework is Safer with Schaefer.
Okay, thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Kelman, as well. What is your vision for District 7?
Okay. A sound mind and a sound body. Fundamentally, that's what we need in our society, what we need to produce out of our public schools or any school, so that we have adults who can contribute to the betterment of our society themselves and their families. And so, as for our school system, in order to do that, that ties into some of my priorities. Extracurriculars are a key part, we know it, we've known it for years, is a key part of what makes our students healthy adults, ready to work in our republic. And so, that's why we need to support a variety of extracurriculars all the way. We also can't have a sound mind and a sound body if we don't have top-quality educators, and we have a talent retention crisis here in Hamilton County. And too often, we have educators that are choosing to serve other kids in other districts. They want the best for our kids here, but for them to be their best, they have to go to other districts. Too often, they are not able to teach the way that they know is best for their kids. Too often, they know that they are not able to be treated as the trained professionals that they are, and they have to go to another district. So, for District 7, we're privileged to have a lot of great people coming in every day to make us sound minds and sound bodies, but we need to extend what we do in District 7 to the rest of the Hamilton County school system.
Very good, thank you, we appreciate it. Next question for everybody, we'll start with you, Ms. Schaefer, if you don't mind. The question is, what changes should be made on the state and local level regarding public education?
What I'm hearing from parents and teachers here locally, and I think it's across our community, is teachers are not feeling supported. We are losing our valuable teachers. Teacher retention is a big issue in our district and across the state. The morale of our teachers. We need to encourage our teachers, we need to give them the tools that they need to do what they love to do, which is pour into our students. And we need to support them when it comes to behavioral issues. That's the other major issue that I'm hearing, is that we're not disciplining enough to keep our students safe and our teachers to feel safe. So, those are the two biggest areas that I feel need to change.
Anybody have a rebuttal on that, or you have your own comments? Mr. Garcia?
No, can I answer the question?
Of course, I just didn't know. If you wanted rebuttal, please go right ahead.
So, I think there are three priorities that I will focus on during my first term as school board. The first is optimizing our existing resources. The school system gets about $600 million of our tax money, and I will delve deeply into that budget and use my business experience to understand all 3,200 line items of that budget and make sure that every dollar is spent on academic development. The second thing I'm going to do is engage the community, and I'll do that two ways. First, I will have regularly scheduled town hall meetings, so I can hear from parents, teachers, and students, understand what's working, understand what's not working, and fix those problems quickly and definitively. But being a businessperson, I'll also engage with local business leaders to understand what their workforce requirements are going to be in the next three to five years, so that we can prepare seniors to step into those roles. And lastly, I'm going to secure our schools. So, I will work with local and state legislators to work on comprehensive reform to ensure that our schools are safe and that no unauthorized individual ever sets foot into one of our schools. But I'm also going to help deal with the, just the rash of behavioral issues that are plaguing our schools today. I'll pass policy to make sure that behavioral problems are dealt with quickly and effectively, utilizing school administrators, teachers, and parents, so that teachers and students can focus on their education. Thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Kelman, same question. Do you, changes on the state and local level for District 7 to make a difference?
Okay, I do just want to add, I believe Mr. Garcia only got one minute, does that sound like?
That's fine.
Do you have anything?
That was good, thank you.
All right. So, at the state level, I have seen curricular trends and standards come and go over the years. I've actually gotten to participate when it comes to technology pathways in CTE, which stands for Career Technical Education, used to be called vocational, participate in some of the ideas that have come and gone. I've gotten to pilot classes. Discrete Math was a class I piloted back at CSAS and was quickly copied by several major private schools. So, there is a coming and going, sometimes a disconnect between the skills that our businesses and industries need and what is offered at our schools. So, the state has kind of been a little bit on the ebb on that, so I would like to see a rejuvenation at the state level of the CTE pathways. Now, as for locally, we have to, one thing that we are improving on at the school board level is coordinating with our county leaders, our state representatives, advocating up to the central government in Nashville what it is that we need here. And I think a lot of people that I've talked to are on the same page, that we have to remind them, we are the most geographically and socioeconomically diverse large school system in this state, and we need to be telling them, no, this is what we need, rather than them in Nashville saying, this is what you will do. Doing that in a way that helps the folks in Nashville understand that what, we are trendsetters, and when they follow our trends, it's going to be good for them and good for the rest of the state. And so, that's something we continue to improve on.
Thank you. Any rebuttal to that statement? Okay, move on to the next question then. Given all the issues that arise right now, how can the board stay focused on student achievement? We'll let you go first this time.
Okay, so, one of the things that we have to remember is that the board has certain kinds of hard power with approving the budget and setting policy, and of course, guiding the superintendent on expectations, potentially hiring and firing a superintendent. But there's a tremendous amount of soft power that comes with the human connections to enable everyone up and down that chain to do their best. And so, I think a full, fully committed board member has to spend a lot of time on those human connections. Now, I'm fortunate, after having spent 15 years in this system as a coach and as a teacher, I've got a lot of those human connections. People know what they can expect from me, and they know that I honor their work, even though I don't always agree with them. And they also know I'll tell them if I don't agree with them. And once you start building that, then that helps you support the people who need to focus on the most important concerns and lets them know that you're going to be there for them when it might be easy to sort of stab them in the back, throw them under the bus. I've said to multiple people, as I've started this campaign, is like, I'm here to make us all be our best. I'm not throwing anyone under the bus along the way, because we have thousands of people, adults, volunteers, professionals, that come into this system every day, even though they know that that could be a really bad day for them, it could be a bad day for the school. They know that there are some people out there that do not necessarily share the passion that they do, but they come in every day, and it's for these kids and all the families. And we need people on the board, as many as possible, that are able to take that full approach, not just the hard power, but the soft power, and leverage those connections.
And we have a lot to elect with only one incumbent on the board.
Correct.
Come election day. Okay, Ms. Schaefer, the same question to you. How do you see as far as the school board goes? How do you keep up with student achievement despite situations that may arise?
Student achievement, student success, is highly dependent upon teacher success and also communication with parents. So, as the board needs to draft policy that supports teachers, that supports lowering the student-to-teacher ratio, and putting more teachers in the classroom, which is a direct correlation to student success, and supporting financially through the budget, hiring of more teachers, giving schools that need it the dollars to hire more English-as-a-second language teachers, because we have some schools in demographics that need more of that than other schools. So, there are some flex dollars that the schools currently get, and I think we need to increase that at the board level, so that the schools can hire to their needs, to the students' needs, and that success. We have to include parents in this communication. It's a trying relationship between parents, students, and teachers. Parents' involvement brings student success up. It's just proven, and we have to include our parents in that process.
Mr. Garcia, again, how does the board stay focused and stay concentrated on student achievement?
So, the board needs to just focus, again, I believe that as well, that teachers need to be compensated properly, we need to reward our teachers. The fact that there are only 3,000 classroom teachers in Hamilton County, but Hamilton County has 6,000 employees in the school system, I think that ratio is skewed. The other thing that I believe, that wasn't an intentional thing, the other thing is the parent-to-teacher, or the student-to-teacher ratio, at the top of the house at the macro level, it appears that Hamilton County Schools has about a 15 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio, but in District 7, that ratio is very, very different. The best one is Hamilton County Middle School at 20 to 1, and the worst one is this school, it's 23 to 1. We need more teachers in this district, we need more teachers in these schools, and if we don't do that, we're setting up these kids for failure, and that's not right. So, we need to, as school board, we need to set policy that supports those initiatives. We need to support the superintendent when he is supporting those initiatives, and we need to come against the superintendent when he is not supporting those initiatives. As Mr. Kelman said, it's one of the hard things that the school board can do, is hold the superintendent accountable for his performance, and quite frankly, with Hamilton County Schools being ranked 40th in the state, and he being compensated amongst the top 5% of superintendents in the country, I don't think he's doing a good job.
30 seconds, rebuttal, any comments? Okay.
Well, I do have a comment. So, the risk of, as they would say in football, sounding like a shameless homer. So, I've known Dr. Robertson for a long time, and believe me, he knows that I will give him a piece of my mind. I have before, as with several other people in the central office. The other day, I was sending him an email, and the little picture comes up on our email, and it's from years ago in his case. In my ID, it's years ago. So, as I've seen him go through the system, I'll say that we've kind of both grown old together, and absolutely, these kids and these families deserve the best, but I will say this, that what I've seen from Dr. Robertson in the five superintendents, including him, that I've been through in 15 years, he is doing a good job. I think he wants to be better, I think we want him to be his best, we want everyone to be his best. But I would say, from my experience, having seen five superintendents come through, that I would say that he's doing a good job.
Okay, thank you.
May I say something?
Please.
I don't think he is. When the number-one school district in the country, which is Adelaide Stevenson in Lincolnshire, Illinois, pays our superintendent $248,000 a year, and they're ranked one in the nation, and we pay our student superintendent $225,000 a year, and we're ranked 40th in the state out of 121 schools, that's not doing a great job. That's mediocrity.
Ms. Schaefer, anything from you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move on to the next question, and thank you. What are your thoughts on the current and the proposed budget as we just discussed for the upcoming school year? And then, what do you determine, where do you see, and I know we've talked about this as well, the most important place that that money should be spent? Where are your budget priorities? We'll start with you, Mr. Garcia.
So, it's very simple, furthering academic development. That's where we should be spending the majority of our budget. This is a school system. That's where the money should go, in preparing students for the future. But we can't ignore facilities. So, we asked for $8 million in facilities this year, and I think we put two in the budget, and the county took care of the other six, but historically, it's only been $3 million, which is why the schools are in the shape that they're in. I know we're going to build some schools. Those projects need to be kept on track and kept on budget, and we need to make sure that these schools are safe as they're being built. But my priority is going to be academic development, full stop. That is what we're here for.
Okay, Ms. Schaefer?
I agree with Mr. Garcia. Academics is first. That's why we're here. We are building the leaders of tomorrow, and so, our funds have to go towards academics. And to do that, we also have to maintain our facilities. It is unacceptable that four out of five toilets in this building and the girls' bathroom do not work. It's unacceptable that teachers are bringing their own toilet paper to work. We need to use our funds to maintain our buildings. We need to fix our sign at the high school. We have toilets in elementary schools that aren't working. So, maintenance of our facilities is a top priority for me in the budget, along with academic performance.
Okay, Mr. Kelman, you as well.
Yeah, so, something that I have said in several of the voter questionnaires is, we have a facilities department that is understaffed and overstretched and needs complete rethinking in how it's organized, and the people in facilities will tell you that. I don't want to quote anyone and quote the wrong numbers, but we have, for a school system of our size, less human resources in that department than we need. And so, something that has to be stressed is, even though we are investing more capital right now in facilities, we are setting ourselves up to have the same maintenance problems if we don't reexamine facilities. Now, I also want to point out that when it comes to academics, which are absolutely first, that part of building the whole student and making sure you get the most out of them in academics, I've lived it, I've seen it as a coach for years and sponsoring other extracurriculars, that that's an area that we do not fund effectively enough, especially to reach the kids that most need that. And then, we ask ourselves why we're spending so much on essentially various kinds of stick carriers to try to compel our kids to do what we want them to do, when we could actually spend less by rethinking and funding these activities that make a difference. I have seen it over the years, it's the reason why I'm unretired for the second or third time, I guess third time technically, is because it's so important that we offer these things, it makes a difference. And so, as you peel the onion back of all the things we spend money on, there are absolutely areas that you cannot tie back to student success within 30 seconds. If you can't explain in 30 seconds how your job ties back to student success, then maybe that should not be a priority right now. But that said, there are a lot of things that don't necessarily fall under what you might think of as academics, that those of us who have lived it as teachers know, this is a critical cog in success of our students, being a sound mind and a sound body.
Okay, no, I am not a parent, but I know that there are a lot of parents and students in the audience, and a Beacon Center poll that came out yesterday said, interviewing parents, the number-one parental concern right now is, is my child safe? Now, a child psychiatrist told me that these are just as dangerous as weapons being brought into the school. Start with you, Ms. Schaefer. What is your opinion on social media phones in school during school hours?
I believe that they're a distraction. We know that social media is harmful to teenagers. I know that the governor has spoken about his initiative to require social media companies to get parental consent for the minor to be able to get a social media account under their own name. I think that's a step in the right direction that the governor is leading the way in. But I do believe that the phones in the school is a distraction, it also is a huge source of bullying. We know that online social media is a huge source of bullying, and it affects the whole student, and it affects the atmosphere in the school.
Mr. Garcia, same question?
So, again, school safety is one of the things that I'm most concerned about, it's one of the pillars of my platform, and I believe electronic devices are problematic. I believe electronic devices are problematic. In fact, the school board passed an electronic device policy that states that students must keep their devices in their locker during school hours, but unfortunately, not every principal is adhering to those policies, because apparently, there is something called administrative liberty that allows principals to determine what policies they want to enforce. That has to stop. If the school board dictates a policy, it must be followed, and that's a prime example of that. So, I agree with Mrs. Schaefer, I think we need to restrict the use of these electronic devices, and we need to keep our kids safe, not only from social media, but also physically in the schools. We need to make sure these schools are safe, and there's really things that we can do that to make them more physically safe and harder to get into by unauthorized people, but also dealing with the behavioral issues. I think there's a lot of behavioral issues that are going on in schools today that can't be overstated, and I think they're happening because, in some cases, the school system thinks they know better than parents how to deal with behavioral issues, and they hide those behavioral issues from parents. I think parents are part of the solution, and if we include parents in dealing with those behavioral issues, then we can let the teachers and the students focus on education.
Mr. Kelman, you?
Okay, well, so, I have some good news. District 7 has been ahead of the curve on this issue, sometimes to the chagrin of these very students here, they can attest that we have been ahead of the curve on restricting use of distracting devices in class. Me personally, my daughter, my senior daughter, who's here in the audience, can attest, it was a long time before she got to even have a smartphone. As for me myself, I know why, only because I knew I was coming to this campaign did I switch from a normal, old, retired person flip phone to a, it's still a flip phone, but it is a smartphone, so that I can be in better contact with all you supporters. But, beyond that, so, it has taken a lot of work, intentional work, by our staff and our administrators to be ahead of curve on that and other issues. And time and again, in District 7, we have shown that we know what works, and as, when I sit on that board seat, I will advocate for all the things in District 7 across the county, because, believe me, there are teachers and administrators that want to do those same things, they don't necessarily see the same support. I'm not going to call anyone out by name, but I see a board member here tonight that I know he probably agrees with a lot of that same stuff, and I'm glad he's here. And so, I will add on the general safety part. So, this weekend, I was with my daughter, who's going to Texas A&amp;M, we were at the preview weekend, she was invited to a special extra day for 40 kids that they're really targeting, and at one point, they separated the students from the parents, and there was a parent discussion with current and former Aggie parents, and let me tell you, 2/3 of those questions was, we know Texas A&amp;M has a history of academic and community spirit, that's why we're picking here, even though we could go a lot of places, but tell me, is it really true, are you still adhering to the values that we value as a community? And again and again, they were able to say that. Well, let me tell you, here in District 7, we're still adhering to those values, I know it works, I will fight for it.
I'm sorry, she was just coaching me along, she said, time's up, I didn't see the card go. My mistake, I'm sorry for not helping you along. This is kind of, I don't know that it's a broad question, and it's certainly something that's a challenge, that's difficult to tackle, but just checking through the records here the last week or so, October 7th of 2022, September 15th of 2023, February 14th, excuse me, February this month, there are a lot of active shooter threats. The texts go out to all the parents that this is happening. We have parents in the newsroom, we get calls, that's sometimes how we're tipped off on it, because parents want to know what's going on, of course, they want to know right away. So, how do you assure the parents in District 7 that their kids are safe when they go to school?
Me first?
Yes, sir.
Great. Well, my kids do go to school here, and we do have a choice, and we have chosen again and again to send our kids here, and I have lived it as a teacher. So, my first five years were at CSAS, before we'd invested in a lot of the hardening of buildings that we have since done, and my classroom was the first classroom you'd get to if you walked in the door that was never locked to come into school. So, I thought about it, and then the irony was, when I first came to Eastham, we were a little more secure than CSAS, but again, my classroom was the first door you'd get to if you just busted open that front door. So, it's something that I have had to think about personally, and I can assure you, we have, my predecessors, administrators, school board members, have invested a lot physically in physical security. We're at the point where the next step is behavioral security in two parts. First of all, having the right procedures in place that we don't cause flaws in our security plan by not adhering to that security. It's a lot like computer security. There's the knee-jerk thing you think you need to do, but then there's the carefully thought-out procedures that you actually need, because you have to remember that your adversary gets a vote, and that's the kind of spot that we're at, is we've invested in a lot of the physical side, we're getting there on the procedural side. Finally, the last part, getting back to having sound minds and sound bodies, is we want a school system where no student would ever think of being a security threat, and that comes with all those things beyond just teaching to tests and focusing on metrics of academic performance. It is building a school community, it is building students that care about each other and are parts of teams, just like Texas A&amp;M does, and just like we are striving to do in District 7, and we need that everywhere in this county, and I know how to do it.
Okay, Mr. Garcia, let's move on to you, same question.
So, physical security is paramount. I spent my entire career in the financial technologies arena, working at banks and credit card companies, and there wasn't a door I was not allowed to go into that I could get through. There are simple things that we could do. I worked at a building that had turnstiles, there's only two ways into the building, through turnstiles, and if you didn't belong in that building, you got stuck in a turnstile, and you weren't getting out until somebody let you out. So, there's real hardening things we can do that aren't terribly expensive, that can actually protect students and keep unauthorized people from getting in here. In addition to that, I'm a proponent of the Second Amendment. I think teachers should be allowed to carry firearms in school. I think they need to go through special training, but I think everybody who wants to carry a firearm for protection should be able to do that, and that will help. I think the school resource officers are a big help in keeping our students safe. But at the end of the day, school safety is more than just physical security, it's also a mental health issue. So, we need to figure out how to identify those problems early and figure out how to rectify them, but not all threats to the school come from the student population or even the teacher population, a lot of them come from the outside, so it's important to keep those people out.
Ms. Schaefer, same question to you, please.
First, I want to praise what we have already done with the, they mentioned the hardening of the facilities, the lockdown facilities, the SROs in every school, and how we've involved the community and the sheriff's department in this, and we need to continue that collaboration with the sheriff's department in working with our commission to fund, you know, more of these ideas like Mr. Garcia is sharing. So, collaboration is the first thing, is working with the city leaders as a whole to making that this is the forefront. the forefront. So I want to praise what we've done in that area. I also believe that we do need to focus on the mental health of our students. And that involves involving parents in the discussion. Because parents can be involved in telling the teachers, telling the school, you know, where a student is at. If a teacher and a parent is in communication, then the teacher's going to have a better idea of where that student is at. It's not always going to be caught, but it's a step in the right direction. So including parents in this discussion and open communication with teachers, I think goes towards the safety of our schools.
Everybody shakes their head. So we all agree on that, right? Keep the kids safe. What about school vouchers? And the money that the governor wants to spend to allow students to choose to go to private school where they choose? And that takes students away from public schools. With you representing District 7, that's where you are. Ms. Schaefer, what's your response?
I think every parent should have the right to choose what's best for their child. Every child has a different need. What works for one child doesn't always work for another child. So it comes down to, school vouchers, at its core, comes down to the constitutional parental right to choose the education. And the Supreme Court has said that, that that is a fundamental right of a parent to choose and to navigate the education of their child. So at the core, that's what we're protecting. Now, when it comes to funding that, the governor is talking about raising funds outside of the normal school funds to fund that, so it's not taking away funds from the public school system. And we need to, as a school board, anticipate what that, how that might affect us. So knowing that it's here, and it could be building and growing, we need to anticipate that and build our policies and our budgets around that.
Mr. Garcia.
So I too am supportive of the voucher program. I published an op-ed in the Tennessee Star last week outlining my support for vouchers, for a lot of reasons. Parental choice is a big part of that. But it's also the way the free market works. Competition does two things. It improves quality and lowers costs. And the Cascade Institute, based out of Portland, Oregon, did a study looking at all the school districts that have had to compete with voucher systems dating all the way back to 2001. And with only two exceptions, the performance of the public school system has improved during the course of that timeframe. So voucher systems not only give parents choices on how to best educate their children, but it also improves the quality of the existing public school system. And like Mrs. Schaefer said, this talking point that we're going to gut the schools' funding and all that money's going to leave the schools, I don't believe that's true. I think that there is room for both. So I'm very supportive of the voucher program and the educational savings accounts proposed by the governor.
Rebuttal? Okay, Mr. Kelman, same question.
So our job as a school system, and certainly people on the board, is to build a school system and maintain a school system that most students won't want to leave for any price, them or their parents. I say most because there are some families out there, for a variety of reasons, personal to them, that the public school system's not the right choice for them. And so they need that choice. Our job is not to worry about, you know, whether we will lose students. It is to be the best school system we can be. And obviously, for me, we have chosen again and again to be a part of this school system. And one thing I have said that we don't do well enough as a system overall is advertise our successes. And sometimes, and so I live in Mountain Shadows. I was president of the Association of Mountain Shadows. I had a second stint as treasurer. We have a lot of families in Mountain Shadows that we're friends with that send their kids to private school. And I am always selling the successes of this school system to them while honoring their choices. And so one thing that we don't always do well is prevent ourselves from shooting ourselves in the foot in terms of PR. And we don't necessarily want to feel unnecessary heat that is counterproductive to us being our best. But at the same time, I'm not afraid of school choice, because it's more motivating than ever to sell all the great reasons that we are here in this system. That's why I'm running for this seat. I would rather be retired, drinking beer, and eating barbecue. But I believe in this system. I believe in these kids and these families, and I want it to be its best. And whatever does or doesn't happen with vouchers, we want to be the best we can be. As a coach, I don't want to win a race or a meet or a competition because someone else had a bad day. I want to go out there and we be our best. And whether we win or lose that competition, we know we went out there and be the best. And I've been teaching kids that since middle school. That's how we succeed in life. That's how we succeed as a district.
I wanted to touch base.
May I say one thing?
Yes, of course. I'm sorry, yes.
So I don't think we're winning. I don't think we're winning. There are 65,000 school-age children in Hamilton County. There's 45,000 children in the school district. That's 20,000 students where the school system is not meeting their needs. So we're not, we're not winning. We need to do better. And I think that the vouchers will make us do better. So I believe that with every fiber of my being, we have to do better.
Ms. Schaefer, rebuttal from you?
I agree with Mr. Kelman that we do not celebrate what we do well enough. We could market better what we do well. However, there are weaknesses. And those weaknesses cost us a lot of families, even this last year in the middle school. And those weaknesses have to be addressed and dealt with. Policies have to be crafted, and we have to do better, as Mr. Garcia is saying.
I'd like to touch on one question, then we're going to reach out to the audience for questions. But Mr. Garcia, you mentioned earlier, we're talking about school safety and assuring parents that their children were safe. And you mentioned that you were Second Amendment's advocate, and that you believe that teachers should carry weapons in school.
I said, the teachers should have the right to carry weapons if they so choose. But they should go through specialized training to make sure that whatever they're doing isn't counterproductive to other respondents and those types of things. So I think it's a broader issue. But generally, yes, I do believe that every citizen in the United States has the fundamental right to protect themselves.
Mr. Kelman, same question to you.
Could you repeat the question?
When it comes to keeping children safe at school, and the parents want to know, are their children safe? And the suggestion is, Mr. Garcia, he is in favor of teachers having the right to carry the weapon on campus as long as they are properly trained to do so. What are your thoughts?
It's a fair thing to explore. Because, I mean, I'm going to be straight with you. It'd be easy for me to say that we've got enough on our plates as teachers, which, for the most part, is true. But absolutely, it has been discussed. I have discussed it with people over the years, multiple times. So it's, I'm not afraid to explore any question. Also, I am someone who owns firearms. I'm not afraid of them. I want to defend the students in this school. So it is absolutely something to be explored. Whether it is the correct thing to do or not, and how that's structured, that it becomes a net positive rather than a net negative for all the other things that teachers have to do as professionals, I'm not necessarily convinced. But absolutely, that is a fair thing to look at. I'm not afraid to look at anything like that.
Okay, Ms. Schaefer, same question to you, too. What are your thoughts?
I am a proponent of the Second Amendment. However, changing that policy is way above the school board's authorization. That is a legal court ruling that firearms cannot be near schools. So that is beyond our authority as school board members to pass that type of policy. But what we could do in support of that is working, again, with our sheriff's office and having more armed officers in the building. That is something that we could do, a policy that would work.
Okay, I was kind of nudged over here to turn the mic over to the audience. Do we have any questions? And if we do, if you just raise your hand, and we'll bring the mic to you. There's one in the back.
If people have a question, we could ask to make it write it on a card. I know some people submit questions by cards, so they can maybe a card, have several of them pass out, several students.
We're not going to pass the mic around you. I'd go with the questions that I have here. My apologies for this. Okay. I don't have a teleprompter, so I'm just, you know. One of the questions is, what guides you, academically speaking, in quotes, in your support of Hamilton County students? Ms. Schaefer, let's start with you, please.
What guides me in my support of Hamilton County students is that I'm a graduate of Hamilton County schools. I'm the product of Hamilton County schools, and it served me well. I have children in Hamilton County schools. And my heart is for my children and for my community's children. Our children are our future leaders. They'll be the ones standing on this stage in years to come. So what guides me is a heart to see them succeed, a heart to see all the resources we have poured in to what's best for the student.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Schaefer. I'm not a product of Hamilton County schools, but I am a product of the public school system. My children are products of the public school system. And I have grandchildren in the public school system here in town. And I believe that giving our kids a good, solid academic education is the greatest gift we can give them to ensure their success in the future. So absolutely, that's the biggest reason I'm up here, is to give that gift to my grandchildren.
Mr. Kelman, same question.
Well, so I have been a part of this school system for 15 years. It's my second career. I was successful in a first career as a software engineer. And year after year after, I switched over, for the first five years at least, I would get a call a couple times a year from people like, don't you want to come back? This is how much money will make you. And I said, no. I've been committed to this system for a long time. And the reason why is the profoundly incredible men and women that molded me as a product of DeKalb County Schools in Atlanta. And then, as I continued in the system, the profound pride and honor that it is to serve these families, to work with colleagues that have, are at least as talented, if not more talented, in most ways than any team I worked with in computer engineering, any team I worked with when I was traveling for military contracts. I'm committed to them. Because just as people made me someone who could help serve this society, we want to do the same for the next level, and people have to step up to do that. So that's why I've done it as a teacher. That's why I'm running now as a school board member. So when Coach Dr. Wingate was school board member, I always told people, I was like, I am more than happy to give Joe a piece of my mind, which I did frequently, and trust him to make the call, which I didn't always agree with, but always respected. And then, when it became clear that he was not going to run again, then and only then did I say, we need to preserve the success that we're doing here and spread it to those parts of the district that are not getting what they deserve and need like we do. And we need someone that knows from day one how to do that. And so that's why I'm here.
Okay, we have a couple more questions here before we wrap things up. And the question, I guess it's twofold. And we'll start with you, Mr. Garcia. As a board member, where would you look to make budget cuts? And are there any areas where you would not consider making any cuts?
So I would not make any cuts in education. The exceptional education program was cut $2.5 million last year. I don't understand why that was done. If you look at the classroom education portion of the budget, even though it was increased by $10 million between 2023 and 2024, the percentage of overall spend for the school district was actually, went down from 48% to 43%. So even though we're spending more money, we're spending less money on education than we were just a year ago, as a percentage of the overall. So I wouldn't sacrifice education. The first place I would start looking is this social, emotional, and academic development, stuff that was put into the school system. I think we have 79 seed counselors in the school district. All of them make roughly two-thirds more than the teacher makes, which I believe is a problem. We're spending a lot of money on that program. Those seed counselors have no accountability. They can talk to your students without you knowing it. They don't have to disclose those conversations. And some of these teachers or these counselors, my grandson included, was told they can talk to them about things he can't talk to his mom about. That is not right, and that has got to stop.
Okay. Ms. Schaefer, same question.
One of the most inefficient parts of our budget is transportation. So we do need to look at our transportation costs, which includes the transportation of school choice. I'm for school choice, but I think parents should have to transport their children to the school that they believe is best for their child. Transportation costs have to be dealt with. And I would not cut, as I agree with Mr. Garcia, anything with academics. And I agree that we have overfunded the seed positions. We have an entire department full of people at the central office with high salaries. We have social workers. We have counselors. And we have seed positions in every school. Hearing from teachers, this disciplinary approach is not working. So that is an area that we need to reassess, and we could take some funds from those positions and put it back into lowering the teacher-to-student ratio.
And Mr. Kelman, same question to you.
So what I am well aware of firsthand is the ways that our schools in District 7 do not get the same resources as many other districts. We get things cut and taken away from us that our kids deserve. And we let people sometimes stereotype us out here into just having everything that we need. And we know, families, either yourself or your friends, how many hard-working families we have in this district, that are just in much need of all the services that other districts in Hamilton County get. We are not just, we are a very complex demographic district. And I will fight for more of that. You know, once upon a time, we were holding a track meet up at the track here, and there was a school that came, and we had a fresh, young teacher manning the gate, and a parent just from this school refused to pay the fee, which is funding the equipment that we need to run the meet for their child. And so the teacher didn't know what to do. She came to me later, and I said, well, describe the person to me. I went to the coach, who I'd known for a long time, actually got him into coaching, and I explained what went on. And I remember, he said to me, he said, I know the parent. I can't guarantee I'll get the $5 out of her, but I can guarantee you I'll get $5 of hassle out of her. Well, when I sit on that District 7 seat, I can't guarantee every time we will get the funds that we need, but I guarantee you we will get the hassle. So that if we don't get it today, we will get it next time. We will make clear to folks in central office, not on the board, people in central office, that are yanking funds that should come here, that that's going to stop. And I will add one more thing related to fighting for things, as Mr. Garcia said about what was apparently said to his grandchild. That is absolutely unacceptable. And people in this central office, they've known me for years. They know I won't let that slide if I hear about something like that. It will stop.
Any other comments? Rebottals? Okay, another question. I'm happy to say I think that it's written in cursive.
All right.
But I'm not sure that I can read it. Okay, Ms. Schaefer, we'll start with you. The question is, what are we going to do about schools like East Brainerd Elementary, where the ratio is 32 to 1, teacher to student, and six to seven students per room do not speak English or have just been read to? And I'm sorry that I can't read all of that. Can you help me with that? Or even so, we could just take it with those numbers. And how would you address that if you're elected?
I'm going to fight for lowering that student-to-teacher ratio. That is a direct correlation to student success. And we have to have a lower student-to-teacher ratio. We also have to have, as the superintendent did give, schools kind of flex dollars. We need more of that. Because there are schools like East Brainerd Elementary that need more ESL teachers. They just have to have the help. And that is how we can address that immediately, is putting funds in the school's hands to hire what that school needs.
Mr. Kelman, same question.
So one thing that I have definitely been pushing is the understanding of our foreign-language speaker needs in District 7. And not only is it a tremendous Spanish-speaking language need, but I can count easily five other languages where we have multiple families in this building, let alone in this district, who their parents either speak English poorly or not at all, and there's other languages and language services we need. And we have a little bit, but we don't have as much as some other districts. And that is one area where we get stereotyped into a corner, and we need people to explain the reality. We are doing more with less out here, but we deserve more.
Mr. Garcia.
So I think, I think sometimes we conflate two issues. And the two issues I think we conflate are school size and classroom size. So I'm a product of very, very large schools in Houston, Texas. There were 4,200 kids in my high school, 1,000 people in my graduating class. I know firsthand that schools that size can work. The key is smaller classroom ratios, teacher to students. And we can accomplish that by having more teachers in the classroom with fewer students per classroom. So like Mrs. Schaefer said, that's paramount to the success of these students. You have a, my data says that East Brainerd Elementary is actually 22 to 1, which is still too high. So we need to figure out how to get that student-to-teacher ratio So we need to figure out how to get that student-to-teacher ratio lower and make sure that we're able to teach our children more appropriately. And as far as English as a secondary language of some of these folks, look, I'm a son of Cuban immigrants. English is actually my second language. I learned English in school. I know how important that is, and I know how great a benefit that is in schools. We need to be able to help these kids not only come up to speed in speaking the language, but we also need to help these kids assimilate into the environment so that they can be productive members of their, of their, of their community in the school and the community outside the school. So I think that's what we need to focus on, is that student-teacher ratio. And we need to get those kids that can't speak English, we need to get them into the fold as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. We have another question from someone in the crowd, and it said that parental figures were mentioned to help decide the student's mental health, mental state, and education. How would you perform this and monitor this for students of broken families? Ms. Schaefer, we'll start with you.
We use apps to communicate with our teachers now. We need more communication from the very beginning of the school year. We need parents of broken families, both sides, to be involved. Just because they may be divorced and have two different households that the child travels to, it doesn't mean that those parents should not be involved. So it shouldn't just be one parent. We should strive from administration standpoint to include both parents, both households, and have direct communication daily with your students' teacher.
Mr. Kelman?
So this is another area where I've lived it for years, and I've also seen it evolve as the methods that do or don't work to get in touch with parents has evolved. And sometimes the things that you think would work don't. Sometimes there's a lot of intuition involved, almost like being a private investigator, tracking down how to get in touch with the appropriate person. Teachers want, more than anything else, to get parents or guardians or whoever is the adult in the household to be involved. But you are correct that in some cases, households are broken. In some cases, the households don't exist, and the kids are living at other houses. And so the question becomes, how do you honor both your professional duties and legal duties with the reality of trying to keep this kid involved in the system? And it is art as much as it is science. And I will say that this is one area where, among several, where we sometimes have policies in place that seem on paper to be smart policies, but any teacher, if you just talk to them, will be like, "Let me explain to you why this does not work." And so there's more that we can do with these auxiliary positions, which have gotten some scorn here, to make them effective helpers so that teachers have so much on their plate that they don't also have to be the private detective. And I can say, at this school, we have used some of these additional resources. I have personally used them to help deal with kids that are having trouble. And I do have 30, 31 kids in some of my AP classes. And that's hard enough to do, even if they were all angels. And so that is, to sum that up, is there's a lot of solutions that sound good but don't necessarily work as well as others. And I have my finger on that pulse because I have lived it. And I have the friends that they will give, just like I'll give people something straight, I have people that'll hold me accountable because they will not hold back from me about whether what we're trying to do at a board level is smart or dumb.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
So I think, I think parent involvement is key. We need to figure out how to get the parents involved. And if that's what, we use these additional resources in the schools so that it frees up the teachers that teach, then I'm open to consider that. But that's not what's happening. These positions are disintermediating parents. They're circumventing parents. They're telling kids that they don't need to talk to their parents, and it's not working. So it needs to change. The emotional health of our students is very, very, very important. I think that teachers need to focus on academics. And if there are other roles in the school that need to focus on mental health, then we need to explore that. But I don't think it should be left to the teachers. They have enough on their plate.
Okay, now we're about out of time. We remind everybody tomorrow that tomorrow begins early voting, tomorrow until the 27th. So as we close tonight, Mr. Garcia, we'll start with you. Convince us why you are the person for the job.
So the primary election is between Mrs. Schaefer and I. Mr. Kelman isn't on the ballot yet. So that's important to know, that not all three of us will be on the ballot. As far as I'm concerned, I think there's three reasons to choose me in the primary over Mrs. Schaefer. Number one, I'm retired. My kids are grown. My grandkids are in the school system. I don't have any other priorities in fulfilling the duties of school board. Mrs. Schaefer and I share a vision. I'm bringing parents and teachers and students together. But I go beyond a vision. I have a plan, not only to engage our community, but also to optimize our resources and to secure our schools. So that's the reason I think you should vote for me on March 5th and earn the right to face Mr. Kelman in the general election in August. But I do believe that regardless of who wins the general, the primary election on March 5th, whether it's Mrs. Schaefer or myself, I think either one of us would be better candidates than Mr. Kelman in adhering to the, to the will of the people of District Seven.
Well, Mr. Kelman, I'll let you respond to that.
Is this part of the five minutes, or this is just a one-off? It's?
Let me ask the coach.
Yeah.
This is a closing remark. You have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Well, first I'll respond to that, and then I'll do the rest. Is, you know, as a coach, I'm used to people trying to beat me, right? So I hold no personal offense. And I will say that I'm glad that Mr. Garcia has chosen to move here and has kids as part of this system. We need people with that amount of time and experience and passion to be a part of District Seven. We need that. That said, I'm ready from day one because of the connections that I have. And the years that I spent teaching, the years I spent advocating for this district and making changes academically, pushing for changes, making changes athletically, making changes that helped us get the most from our facilities. I have a record of doing that. People know that record. I've never been one to try to tout a lot of it, but I have the receipts with the people that matter. And I'm ready from day one to do that for all of you. I have that record to prove it. And I believe that the connections I've made over the years in District Seven will convince everybody that's out there in District Seven that I am here for them and will make the most of those four years on that seat.
And Ms. Schaefer, to you.
I am your hometown girl. I'm a graduate of Hamilton County Schools. I'm a mother, a current parent, who is in the trenches with other parents. I have two children at Westview Elementary. I'm a practicing lawyer and advocate in Chattanooga. I have advocated for children from juvenile justice to dependency neglect, through adoption, through custody issues. And I've advocated for elders. I speak for those who can't speak for themselves. As a school board member, I will advocate for your child, for your school, for you as a parent. I want to give back to my hometown. I want to use my experience and my knowledge to serve my community. I have firsthand knowledge and experience. I speak to parents, students, teachers every day. I see them in the classroom. I see them at local youth sports. I see them at church. I hear from them. What I'm seeing and hearing breaks my heart for our community. And I want to change that through a safer approach, supporting our teachers, students, and administrators, addressing our funding challenges, fighting for our conservative values, enhancing our facilities, and responding to your parental input. The school board builds a framework through policies and efficient budgeting practices. That framework is safer with an advocate like Schaefer. And I ask for your help.
Okay, thank you all very much. I need to tell you, we've got a text. There are other people in the audience who have questions, but we don't have the time. Unfortunately, this has been great conversation. And what will happen is, the questions that are here will be passed along to you individually via social media. Is that correct? Thank you for being here. Thank you for all of your time. Definitely, you all want to make District Seven a much better place for our students. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good job, everyone.